Welcome to Board Supervisors Meeting. If you could all please rise.
My political reasons by the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, indivisible, infinite, just for myself.
Thank you very much. Alright, so for announcements, we did want to let you all know that we did have an executive session on October 29th. The Board of Supervisors met an executive session to discuss matters of personnel, in specific, the Chief of Police, Recruitment Process, Uniform Collective Bargaining Agreement, Negotiations, and Appointment of a Township Consultant. And other than that, we just want to let you know that we are being recorded tonight for rebroadcast. Barry's not with us tonight, and he did say we could go ahead without, so we're gonna keep coming.
We have permission?
Yeah, we have permission, exactly. So tonight, we do a presentation from Tommy Ryan on our budget. On the 2026 schedule.
Uh, thank you. For those of you who were with us last meeting, um, the overview I'm about to provide is a similar message. Uh, so throughout the year, uh, we prepare our budget on an ongoing basis. Um, we don't begin to put together the budget all as most municipalities do, in that there are things happening around us all the time, things in Washington and Harrisburg, that affect the municipality's ability to prepare uh, a good, reliable budget. So the budget that is, uh, presented this evening, uh, it made available in the meeting packets, this is actually our 128th version of the budget. Every time we update the budget, uh, we save it as a, uh, separate file. Uh, so on at least 128 days, uh, throughout the year, uh, so far, uh, we have opened up the budget file and made adjustments as new information becomes available to us. And in doing that, we can get a budget that is, uh, again, uh, very reliable. Uh, so starting off with the general fund, uh, the budget presented this evening has, uh, no tax increases, no new taxes. Uh, the real estate millage rate, uh, in this budget is the same, 2.09 mils. Uh, we're projecting relatively stagnant growth with both, uh, the real estate taxes and earned income taxes. Uh, with regards to real estate transfer taxes, um, we're, uh, showing a, uh, very modest, uh, residential resale, uh, budgeted for the coming year. Uh, the number that we received, uh, year-to-date, uh, 2025 is a little elevated because of an approximate $200,000 in real estate taxes that was, uh, paid to the township with a, uh, very large property that transferred, uh, earlier this year. So the budget is conservative in that we don't presume those infrequent large transfers are going to happen, uh, in the coming year. Uh, level activity for building permits, um, we do not have, uh, any new construction outside of maybe a home or two, single-family home or two, or maybe a one and two-lot subdivision. Uh, so nothing big by way of new construction in the coming year. Uh, on the expenditure side for personnel, uh, we do have one additional full-time employee, and that is in our police department. Um, and we do have, uh, funds in there for our next Chief of Police. Uh, on the administrative personnel side, uh, we are decreasing, uh, I should say, holding with one less full-time employee. Uh, in lieu of that full-time employee, the township has hired a part-time employee. Uh, the township will also continue to do zoning officer work in-house. The consultant that we were using, uh, last year, uh, was eliminated. Uh, the shift from one full-time employee to one part-time employee plus, uh, the taking of zoning, uh, services, zoning officer services in-house saves us about $105,000 a year. Uh, so we'll, uh, realize that savings, uh, in the coming year. Uh, one of the bigger, uh, changes to the budget, uh, is the amount of aid that the township is proposing to provide to our emergency providers. Those are the three fire companies that serve our community, two ambulance companies. Uh, year-to-date, the township has provided $146,000, uh, for these folks. Uh, the budget provides, uh, an additional, uh, good chunk of money for them, uh, increasing the aid to those three fire and two ambulance companies to $433,000. Um, 10% increase to the library contribution, uh, that is provided, uh, to our partners at the local library. Um, a modest increase in our roads budget for the coming year. This does not include the road resurfacing program that would be each year. This is just the smaller fixes, cots, repairs and such that we make about a year, uh, increasing to $64,000 from $60,000. And the general fund does not include any transfers in, uh, for receipts, nor any transfers out. Uh, and with regards to the latter, transfer out, uh, that's a little concerning, and we'll, uh, talk about that in just a moment. Uh, the open space fund, again, relatively flat, EIT tax, uh, uh, revenue for the coming year, um, will have, uh, approximately, uh, in expenditures, $1.1 million uh, for a large conservation easement acquisition, uh, that was recently announced just a few months ago. We expect to settle on that in 2026. Uh, and then the debt service that the township pays on two notes, uh, is the other significant expenditure in the open space fund. On the capital fund, uh, we have, uh, in terms of revenue, $1.9 million in reimbursements for the Buttonwood Bridge Replacement Project. The folks may recall the township received a grant, which reimburses our expenses up to 80% for that project. That is on a reimbursement basis only, so the township has to expend, uh, for the work as we progress. Uh, so there'll be a significant draw on the, uh, capital fund in terms of our uh, balance in the fund, uh, during the year until those reimbursement dollars come in, uh, which is why, uh, the projected interest of the capital fund for next year, uh, is lower than it would be otherwise. Expenditures in the capital fund also include, um, uh, $149,000 for a replacement vehicle, public works, and specifically a tractor and a flail mower, and a replacement vehicle in the, uh, police department, uh, at $81,000, a new Chevy Tahoe for the, uh, police department. Uh, the bigger things, other than the, uh, Buttonwood Bridge, uh, the other bigger, uh, items in the budget right now for the capital fund include approximately 280, I'm sorry, $268,000, uh, to rebuild, uh, Schoolhouse Road from Hollow, uh, to Flowing Springs. Uh, that would include some storm sewer work as well. Uh, and St. Andrews Road, if the Board wishes to proceed with converting that from a gravel road to a paved road, it's approximately, uh, $1.24 million. Uh, lastly, the liquid fuels fund, uh, just, uh, last month, the state gave us our estimated liquid fuels for the coming year. For those of you not familiar, it's the portion of the gas taxes that you pay at the pump. Those dollars go to Harrisburg. Harrisburg distributes it to municipalities based on relative, uh, lane miles of roads and population. Uh, the, uh, contribution from Harrisburg will receive in the coming year is about $10,000 less than what we received this year. Um, that's concerning because most municipalities, uh, try to do as much roadwork as possible with the liquid fuel dollars. Uh, we are not, uh, any, uh, different. Uh, however, um, in that some municipalities say the liquid, the, uh, liquid fuels allocation is their road program budget. Uh, we don't take that approach because we know even on a great day, liquid fuels will never fully fund our road program. So the township does budget money in its general fund and in its capital fund, uh, to augment, uh, its road program. And on that topic, the road program is, uh, $500,000 budgeted, uh, for the coming year. Uh, township spent, uh, approximately $300,000. It's its annual road program this year, so we're looking to do a little bit more roadwork next year.
Thank you. We get comments from the board on that before we open it up for questions. Um, and I, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions if I shorted, so. So, uh, the engineering fees, have we changed anything in our projection in light of the potential of changing engineers?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's not weighed in at all?
Yeah.
Um, St. Andrews, obviously, that's a big chunk. Um, is there any potential to, I think you said it was 300,000 was the engineering portion of it? Is there any potential to maybe split some of that up? Or, or if we went to gravel road, you know, you know, I don't think it's something we can talk about.
In terms of-
You really don't have a lot of money, you know, for
Yeah.
next year.
Um, in terms of the improvements, uh, the construction, there, there's no easy phase line here. Once you start, you start. Um, the only practical way to, um, maybe stagger the costs over two years would to be all the, do all the engineering, uh, next year, and then the construction the year after. But if you, if you, if you want to improve this section of the roadway, you'd be spending a good deal of money on the engineering and that almost convince you to move forward with the with the, uh, improvements if needed.
It couldn't be a gravel road at all. It's not a consideration, keeping it gravel. We definitely want to save it.
No, you can keep it gravel.
We could.
Oh, yeah.
Save any money, though, or is it just basically just?
Oh, there, there, there'd be no expenditure if you keep the gravel. Other than the-
But we could improve it. It's, it's, you know, it's in bad shape right now.
Yeah, you could do something similar to what we've done in the last few weeks with the additional millings we put on the gravel roads. You can continue to do that, you know?
That wouldn't, wouldn't solve the dust problem.
Well, the dust and, that's gonna wear away. You're gonna have the washboard.
Yeah.
Um, and the, the drain on either side, uh, needs work. And that's gonna be a big chunk of the money.
Okay, um, the the $268,000 for Schoolhouse, which I'm glad to hear that we're getting that done. Was there also a consideration of changing that to one-way? I think I've heard-
That's, that's included with this project.
That's definite, okay. That's definitely gonna become a one-way road along with that, and that's, you know, that's been approved. Um, and the chief fees that we have there, they're they're actually a little heavier this year than next year. The chief salary.
It is.
Okay, because we're we're expecting to bring the new chief in sooner and and still be paying both.
Correct.
And that's for the whole year?
Yes.
Does anyone have some questions on? And then how far off were we on the EAMIS? Um, from what the ASW was?
The ASW was, yeah, the ASW was-
Off of what they asked.
599,000.
Right, and we said 433.
Yeah.
So we don't have anything extra, but okay, alright. Does anyone have any comments from the public? They would like to come up for public comment on the agenda items, which is essentially this? John?
John Eldridge, 1634 Hilltop Road, Bertrandville. Um, right over the budget, one of the things that didn't get mentioned is the income for next year is $38. The income in 2024 was a million. The income year-to-date in 2025 is a million five. And so, we're going down to $38. That surprises me a little, but there, I guess, uh, there's ways you can work into that. Uh, I somewhat, after years of experience in this field, I might get a feel, feeling that uh, we have enough money and we will just do what we want, uh, which is not a very good place to be. Um, the tax receipt seemed to be lower than in 2024. Uh, transfer taxes are way down, which was explained a little bit. But, uh, so they're way lower than the last two years. And expenses, um, supervisors' expenses go way up. Um, they're now, for the first time, in, probably go up tenfold, as a matter of fact. Uh, so now, for the first time, someone will get a salary and medical insurance, uh, which is something they're entitled to do, and we have to pay. Uh, the police budget goes up approximately 20%. What, what was the, what's the rationale for hiring another policeman? Too much crime? Crime going up?
We were, we've been down, uh, we've been down too. So, we've been trying to find that position for a while now.
Okay, so you're replacing them two?
Yeah, the Chief of Police is a different situation.
Okay, how long have we been down two? I mean, I, the budget numbers such, and it so, show an increase that will allow an additional for whatever we had.
Since last summer.
Yeah. Wow.
Yeah. So we, we've been, we've been down, uh, two positions for at least 14 months. Yeah, 14, 15 months.
Has that impaired something visits traffic?
I think it's made it hard on our staff. It's made it very hard on our force. Who's had to try and figure out how to, you know, cover that.
Cover that.
Yeah, which isn't always a good thing either to have people doing overtime. That, that, that's not a good situation.
And, and there's been, and there's been a great decrease in training. In fact, there hasn't been training, and that's a problem.
They can't go to court.
Can't, can't go to, can't go to classes, can't go to court because there's simply no people to back you up.
Okay. The fire and expense budgets is up 460, which is like a three-fold increase. Um, so when we give more money to the fire company, do we do any due diligence and get their income statements, their balance sheets? They, they get funded 10% of our insurance policies. That's where a ma- a majority of their funds come from. And, uh, I guess they can't live on that, but we, do we have any idea how much that is? How much are we getting from the insurance companies?
Yes, because it, it's passed through the township.
Right.
Those dollars have passed through the township.
You're, you're talking fireman's relief?
Not the fireman's relief, that, yeah, that, that's something else altogether. The fireman's relief and the fire company are separate enterprises. And so, the fire company gets money from insurance policies, and a state maybe from the insurance policies give money, the fireman's receipt, fireman's uh, relief, and I think it's for workman's comp only. It used to be specified that way. I was actually the treasurer at one time in my life of Ludwig's Corner Fire Company, uh, fireman's relief. So-
So, so Act 205 of, of 1984 sets forward what you're referring to. Uh, companies, uh, that are based outside of the Commonwealth that are writing policies for coverage in the Commonwealth, uh, pay a 2% tax on those policies. That money is forwarded to the, to the, to Harrisburg. And then those dollars are allocated, uh, to municipalities, right? And that's the pass-through money, right? We get it every fall, we pass, pass it through to the relief associations of the emergency providers in the township. So that, that, that's not related to workers' compensation. Um, it is, uh, dollars that we pass on to the fire company, to the relief associations in specific, you recall, relief associations are restricted as to what they can and can't do with that. Uh, they could do, uh, you know, supplies and so forth, and there's a big list of stuff that they can use that money for. Yeah, so that, that's in the budget just as a pass-through. So this last year, uh, we received about $71,000 in pass-through money, and the budget presumes the same next year because we're not gonna know the number for next year until maybe September or October of next year.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that, that's, that's something different.
Do you ever look at their financial statements? How much money they raised, donations?
Well, the second-class Township Code says, hey, townships, if you're going to give money to the emergency service providers, uh, they have to give you enough information so you can get comfortable with how they spent that money, and they have to do that before you give them more money. So, we, we do do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, sometimes the emergency service providers will say, hey, look, we're just gonna give you our budget, our audit, the financial statements, here's everything. And sometimes they'll say, okay, you gave us $10, here's how we spent the $10. Give you an invoice, a canceled check, and so forth, but either way, it's fine.
Okay. Um, I guess all, in the police department, the medical expense almost doubled from last year. Um, if you look at the, the expenses in the police department, is that, uh?
Well, our, our budget for '25 was 366,000. You're talking about 2024 actual?
Well, I guess it could be actual in
Yeah.
year-to-date. Yeah, they had 254,000 in 2024, and now they're 471,000. They spent 260,000 so far this year. Um, it seems like is there some increase? It seems like more than five or 10% increase in premiums.
So, so the, the 264, that's again through the, really through the first eight months of the year because we haven't, we didn't pay the premium.
Nine months.
On the, no, we didn't pay the premium for, for September on these numbers, but so, so it's, it's about, we'll call it eight and a half months. Um, I can, I do not know what the, uh, increase was 24 to 25, but I can tell you what the increase in premiums uh, will be 25 and 26. Um, we offer two plans, a high-deductible plan and then a PPO plan, a conventional plan. Um, the, uh, high-deductible plan, there's no change in the premium amount for the coming year. The high-deductible, uh, plan, there's approximately 2% increase, uh, in that for the coming year. The, the, the big uptick is the prescription drug coverage, and that is increasing 25% uh, for the coming year. Now, we're part of the Delaware Valley Health Trust. It's a bunch of municipalities, school district authorities that self-insure, um, and, um, that's just indicative of what's happening right now with prescription drugs.
Yeah.
So the, the biggest uptick, uh, in dollars for next year will be attributable to prescription drug coverage.
Yeah, I should think prescription drugs would be a, a small portion of the medical.
You'd think, it's not.
In my experience, the experience.
Yeah.
I've lived through it.
Want anymore?
Um, uh, what is, what is that? We have a fire hydrant fee at 26,000?
Well, that was the, that was the fire hydrant tax that was adopted last year.
That we're paying? We're paying fire hydrant taxes?
Not only if you live within a certain radius of a fire hydrant.
We're paying a fee of $26,000 to somebody, I presume.
Oh, yeah, to the, uh, you, you're talking about the, the receipt or the expenditure?
There's $26,000, it says in expenses
Yeah.
for fire hydrant fee.
Well, don't we pay the water?
It's, 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 it's water bills, and they're, and they're, what's the line number there?
We're trying to get reimbursed for it.
Um, yeah.
Before, we were just footing the bill.
Aqua and Pennsylvania Marifal have hydrants in the township, and they bill us on a per hydrant basis, and they bill us monthly. And those bills for the year come out to around $25,000 a year.
And previously, all the residents paid for that, and now it's just the people who are getting the benefit, who are also getting benefits with their, their home insurance because they're near hydrants, so it, it kind of washes out, and the, our residents don't pay it.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm looking through, you gotta be-
Charges, I think, to residents who live near a fire hydrant, a fire hydrant tax.
Right.
Pardon?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't live near a fire hydrant.
So you don't pay it?
What?
You don't pay it?
Okay, well, I'm paying this 55,000.
No.
No.
It's getting paid back to us by this tax. So in other words, if we didn't change that and, and put in that hydrant tax, all the residents would equally be paying for this water, but instead, it's been changed so that if you're benefiting from it, and then you also get a benefit in your insurance, you're not paying.
Okay.
So we have, we have 1,037 properties that are situated within 780 feet of a hydrant, which is the radius uh, that set forth by the second-class Township Code. And they pay $25 each, each year. And the budget doesn't, uh, propose an increase in that. Some municipalities pay hydrant fees out of the general fund, and that's fine, you could do that. Uh, but one of the reasons why municipalities establish a separate fee is that there's a very real benefit to living closer to a hydrant in terms of your insurance. The closer you are to a hydrant, closer you are to a fire company, the lower your homeowner's insurance. So municipalities where not everybody has access to a hydrant, the more equitable approach, some townships and boroughs think, is to only charge a fee to those people that are realizing a financial benefit to being closer to a hydrant. The other thing about charging a fee is if you have non, if you have exempt properties, um, exempt from the payment of real estate taxes, let's say the school district owns a property like they do in the township near a hydrant, um, while they're not paying property taxes, they will pay this fee. The law has that little wrinkle in there, so you are capturing every property uh, that is within 780 feet of a hydrant.
Okay. Um, next issue, there's a line here that says employee withholding pensions, 55,000. What would that be? I mean, if you're withholding, it would cost us nothing.
Yeah, what's the number there, Tom?
Right, oh, boy.
That's probably in the police.
It's hard to know.
Sort of a separate line by itself.
What page are you looking at?
I know, just, four, any point three? I think there's one job.
Is that pension for staff, police?
Okay, so, uh, 43, 300, that is the MMO for the, uh, Defined Contribution Benefit Plan. All, uh, two months ago at the board, uh, meeting, uh, we approved MMOs for each of the two pension plans. That number, 54, 313, that is the number that, uh, we have to pay into the plan next year, or so says the actuary. Um, so that's just the defined contribution. That's not the pension plan for the police. Pension plan for a police are a different number.
Would it be fair to say that comparing that to last year would?
Okay, well, you have, if it's a defined contribution, it has to be itemized by individual, right?
It, yes.
It could be in here, administrative, manager, wherever, police.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it could.
Yeah.
Well, why is everything, all the other lines identified by person, treasurer, finance director, et cetera? But all of a sudden, we have $55,000 in pension, which we could identify. Why isn't that assigned to people?
Yeah, th- th- this is the way to post that number. Um, it's a, it's an M, it's an MMO, it's a single number that the board approves, and it has its own line item in municipal budgets. This is the right way to do it. Um, and just to correct that, I'm not a member of the Defined Contribution Pension Plan, so that, that doesn't include in any compensation to me by way of a contribution of retirement plan.
Well, is a defined contribution, what is it, 5%, 3%?
Uh, the board in past years has, recent past years has, uh, contributed 7%.
7%?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, is there matching by employee?
No.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, okay, open space, I guess, uh, revenue for 2026 is slightly less than 2024, but that's your budget. Um, you, you mentioned there is a planned acquisition for a million dollars in open space that you came up. Can you, can you tell me what that is?
Yeah, so that's the 17-years LLC, and the township is-
72 acres.
72 acres, conservation, and that's off of Pewtown?
Uh-huh. Does this purchase it?
Number one?
No, it's a conservation easement.
It was approved by the county?
County is contributing money towards the conservation easement.
You can't, did we give them? We gave them 200,000, but 10 years ago, or something for one?
No, 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 that's a different one. You're talking, there's 18 years and 17 years, 18 years.
There's 16.
And 16 years. They're all different.
17, and they all-
They're all different. This is 17 years, which he named after the other ones. But this is totally different. It's a, it's a different property. Actually, it's a series of properties.
Some, some of it, 10 acres or 100 acres, 10-acre lots or anything?
We had a nice write-up about it. I don't think it went out yet.
Okay.
We could put it on our Facebook.
Okay, and I guess the last thing, this is debt service. Um, in the township, it went from 400,000 down to zero, and now everything's paid by the Open Space Committee. Uh, and I guess, uh, they asked me, Tommy said, well, the township, this facility, there was no borrowing to do it, which There was no borrowing to do it, which I. Sent by email, where I would like to prove it if that what he thinks is true. Other than that, I think the township should pay their share and the open space committee should pay their share. And it doesn't seem like that's happened.
What's your reasoning? What's your reasoning behind the township paying a fair share?
Well, township is paying zero. For the first line in twenty years or in twenty five years, we're like the fir- first time, well, last year got backed out. So through through its inception, through twenty twenty three. It was split. And all the time it was audited and all the time township managers, Jim, paid that. And that's one reason. It was that way for twenty five years and now somebody's decided. Oh, no, that was wrong. Or you're going to reverse twenty five years of activity? Can't do that. Um.
I I.
That's that's point one. Point two, that there there was a bond issue here. And then there was uh money borrowed for open space. And at one point in our history, five or ten years ago. Um it was combined by somebody saying, by some financial house saying, we'll give you a lower interest rate on the bigger number. And so that combined the township money and the open space money. And so for several years after that, it was manually separated. And then as the managers changed. It was no longer paid attention to. Uh one of the grievous grievous things was when. The hundred thousand dollar equipment was paid out of open space money. That was, you know, it just doesn't, it shouldn't have been done. And so now this time. For the first time in twenty some years, open space committee pays the whole thing. And you're saying that's.
When when the tax comes in, it's split.
Pardon?
When the taxes come in, they are they're identified and split.
That's a that's totally unrelated.
Is a little.
What what I'm saying is there was. We owe. Five hundred thousand dollars. The township should pay two hundred thousand and open spaces pay through it. Or some other breakdown based on the ratio of what was borrowed years ago. And as I said in the email to you guys, if I can prove it, if you want to show me some old. I can prove they had identifica- identified amounts. If you want to show me some old audit statements.
Well, I know that for some time we were mistakenly paying. Out of the general fund.
You're paying capital borrowing on general fund, open space borrowing out of the sec- set of the general fund. If if you're spending money on debt service, you borrowed money to buy open space. You're making those debt service payments. It should come out of the open space fund. There 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 are two notes that are coming out of the open space fund. Collectively, it's about four point two five million dollars in borrowing for open space. And the township will be making debt service payments on these until twenty thirty one. Um pretty good rate, one point zero eight percent. You're not going to beat that these days. Um but that's for open space. That's for open space acquisition. Those dollars should be coming out of the open space fund. I I I don't know why you take them out of the general fund. I understand it might have been the way it was done in the past. But this is a legitimate open space expenditures. It should be coming out of the open space fund.
Well, I had been spending off the 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 fund here. Well, Jim, back in your day, was it, there was two notes. It was one for here and one for open space. They borrowed eleven million or some number and they got combined, cor- correct? Did they get combined?
You're asking me to remember something from from twenty plus years ago. And the answer is, yes, there was a split. Eh eh open space paid certain things and general fund paid other things.
Yes.
My understanding is there was a ser- since I was no longer associated with the township, there was a series of refinancing. And I believe based upon the information that the township has now, is that all of the outstanding debt. Other than the one that's going to be paid off next March, which is the equipment fund, all of the outstanding debt is in fact open space debt.
That's that's my understanding too.
And why didn't anybody know this for the last ten years? All of a sudden Tommy says, oh, I figured this all out.
Well, I will, I will totally say that I think between Jim and then Tommy and Susan. We've straightened a lot of things out that were not necessarily being done correctly before. So that's why I'm saying some of your comparisons aren't. Aren't necessarily valid because there was, there were things that weren't right before and it's, we could give you a whole list. And I think, I feel pretty certain that we're buttoning that all up. Wrote about it myself. But it makes it hard for you to look at a comparison.
Well, okay. There's no way I can see that it's a correct procedure. I I don't know what it would take. If you want to say at some time we paid it off. But we don't know when and when and where. I can't can't refute that. But I don't think that happened. I'm fairly sure. It got combined. It wasn't identified. Both of them were at that time. Did they expire at the same time? That was it, both his township money and open space money would then expire the same day.
I I still have two active notes that expire in December twenty thirty one, open space notes. I I have a third, as Jim mentioned, that will be paid in full next year. We just have one more interest payment left on that third note. That's the equipment fund that comes out of the capital fund.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry if there's redundancy here. John and I should get together beforehand and talk about all our questions. So if any of these questions I have, you already addressed, just tell me and I'll I'll move on. And I'm sorry if this is boring, but budget was the only thing on the agenda, so I'm three year old, just enthralled with our every question here. Receipts and Tommy, you referenced a number previously that was different from the number we have on here. So you, one of us doesn't have the most updated numbers, but it was it was only off by like eight hundred dollars, so not a big factor. In receipts, what is interest? What is our interest income and why are we projecting less than the last two years, twenty four and twenty five?
You don't have the general fund interest?
Yeah.
The balance of the general fund will decrease and we're projecting. One more interest rate decrease when the Fed meets in December. And uh at least two more when they meet, they meet eight times next year.
So you think our general fund balance will be less at the end of this year than it was at the beginning?
It will. Yeah, the 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 general fund balance for the beginning of the year will be one point two million dollars. And that's approximately twenty five percent of the general fund receipts, which is the maximum amount the state. Law will pro- will allow you to save as an operating reserve. Uh I'll be honest, what what we did in past years in carrying that big balance in the general fund. Runs afoul of the state law that says how much you can save in a general fund.
So what happens when there is a a a bigger than twenty five percent balance?
Municipalities transfer that to the capital fund. Because there is no cap on the amount of money you can save in a capital fund. And even if there were, when you take a look at all your capital, long term obligations, roads, culverts. Basins, buildings, open space, you name it. Um there isn't a municipality in Pennsylvania that could possibly save enough money. Uh and have it in the bank ready to go to meet all of our future long term obligations. So um and it it is, it is common practice that you provide the maximum operating reserve the law allows. And then the additional dollars are transferred over to capital, because that's where you're really going to need them.
Okay. So if we spent everything we have in capital expenses on. You're saying we could more than spend what we have in capital?
Oh, boy, yeah.
Okay. For township required.
I'll just hit that MS four with fire with that.
Uh rents and royalties, same same question. Uh it you're expecting a lot more of this coming year than the last two years?
Yeah, so. For rents and royalties, what's the line item there?
Three forty two.
Yeah, so the lion's share of this line item is uh the uh dollars that we receive. Uh from rental for the cell tower behind me. Um so the township has a uh has a lease uh with those folks and that increases two percent every June. Um so when you uh and the the base lease is about nineteen hundred dollars a month. Uh we get an additional five hundred dollars a month because the second uh tower array went up a few months ago. Uh but when you do the math, uh the cell tower lease uh in the co-location, the additional five hundred dollars. Is about twenty eight thousand nine hundred dollars. So of that thirty three thousand four hundred. Uh the lion's share is uh lease payments.
Okay.
Uh to the lease. And then the balance, we we rent out a couple of uh pieces of ground uh for about thirty four hundred dollars for the year.
Okay, thanks. Uh the pension uh under shared revenue, this is still in uh receipts.
Yeah, what's the number there?
Uh three fifty five point zero five zero.
Okay, so this is the Act uh two oh five uh pension uh share, yep.
So is that paid in one lump sum is the first question. Second, why is it so much less for next year than you? Than it was in twenty twenty four?
Okay, so um thi- this is money coming in. This isn't money going out.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so the um the twenty twenty six budget number of one forty six, six forty four. That is equal to the actual number we received this year in pension aid. And uh we do that because um we won't know the pension aid next year until next fall. So until that number is announced, we don't know what it is. Uh so as a placeholder of sorts, this is the number. We we budget for next year, the current year actual.
You say we've already received it for this year?
We we did, yep.
It's not on here. It's not reflected here.
Well, the the number you're looking at is is through nine twelve.
It it comes in October.
We we received, we received it on September twenty fourth this year.
Okay, okay. Uh and how much was it?
It it was the amount that's budgeted for next year, one forty six, six forty four.
Wait, okay. I think that was it for receipts. It was. All right, two expenses. And I know a lot of these things I said this last meeting to are reallocations, as Dana said, to put things in their proper places. We all know accounting is. Partially art, partially science, but it sounds like with your background, you're putting these in the right places. Each person who's come in has assured us that they're now putting it in the right places, but um. I with your experience, I'm I'm more than guessing that uh you're doing it. And and for to some extent, I think people can do it what the way they feel most comfortable. But so I think John asked some of these questions, but the medical and RX things are are real out of whack. Is that, do you think they're just reallocations, like they were put into certain places before and now you're putting them into their proper places? Or have they gone up so much? And of course, under supervisors, it's gone from zero to almost fifty thousand, so presumably.
Yeah, I didn't find too many, too many errors as to where. Um past your medical uh prescription drug vision and dental were posted. Is there something in specific you're looking at?
Well, under supervisors, do the supervisors get medical coverage?
There there's there's coverage, they they're permitted medical coverage under state law. Um I budget always one supervisor to receive it and then if somebody takes it, it's there. If not, it's not.
And fifty thousand dollars?
For family coverage.
Family coverage.
That's it.
Okay.
At the penny, that's the amount.
Amazing.
Yeah.
And then in management. Has gone from. A budget last year of sixteen thousand to a budget of the same number, almost fifty thousand. Is that also a placeholder until you find out?
I'm sorry, with.
That that's not for the the person who was the manager, uh she was single, so she was at the single rate. And now it's at the family rate.
Four oh one point one nine six.
Yeah.
It's still only twenty two thousand this year. Has she been here the whole year?
Well, no, that that's me. I'm I'm management.
Okay.
But that's me. Now, I I started in in March and this is only again through the twelve.
Okay, but but for you, for next year, it would be that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Finance director salary, that's the salary of the 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 new hire?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, and. Her her, right? She's she's.
Susan, yes.
Yeah.
Uh so you have her medical at thirty three, so you can pretty much project that accurately.
Yeah.
And the, so tell me about the auditing services under finance.
What number?
Uh four oh two point three one one. It was. It was almost or has been almost fifty thousand so far this year. Budgeted for fifteen last year, for well, for this year actually. And now you're budgeting for thirty three. Are we caught up on audit expenses?
You are.
Yep.
But so for next year?
Yeah, let me that number again.
Uh four oh two point three one one.
Yeah. Okay, here I am. This is my eyes rolled. Um so this line item includes uh our annual auditing service and for um. For the audit for fiscal year twenty five, uh the appointed auditor fee will be thirty one thousand of five hundred dollars. Um we do budget an additional two thousand dollars if the auditor has to do work above and beyond the um the audit. Um the number was higher in recent years because of the forensic audit that we did a couple of years ago. And trying to untangle the last uh two twenty four and twenty twenty three.
Right, I I understand that.
For one audit, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, mo- even multiple, I think. But thirty thirty one for one year, that's a, I think that's about double what we.
You know what, they um if if you have a kid in college who doesn't know what they want to do um after graduation, um study accounting. Because it's 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 in demand right now. The last municipality in which I worked, the auditor, the appointed auditor fired the township. Uh not because we did anything wrong, we saw the wrong in our books, but they weren't making enough money on our account and they didn't have auditors to service it. So we've seen these fees increase.
Municipal auditors are very hard to find.
Yeah, very, very difficult. Uh but this is in line with a municipality of our size. Unfortunately, it's in line these days.
Okay. You would know. Uh administration uh uh. Personnel ex- expense, we have at a total of twenty one thousand. Is that for the one part timer?
That's the part timer.
So what's your staff now or what what?
Three and a half full time administration.
Including you?
Me, finance director and the codes manager, yeah.
Codes, okay. And and the part and the part this part now, okay. That's a big savings. I hope it. Uh general government professional services has been twenty one thousand so far this year. Uh do you need the number?
Yeah, so la- so this year it included um the recruitment from my position. The township went on, hired a consultant. And we also, I think, paid the consultant to look for a finance director. Uh so for twenty twenty six, this line item includes uh the background checks, the drug and alcohol screenings. Uh and that sort of thing only.
Does that also include um what we were paying for them, for the um for the accounting person?
Uh last year.
No.
No, that's not part of this.
No.
We were paying them a fee for that, just funny.
That's correct, but that would have been under finance.
Hopefully those days are behind us.
Yeah. Who who undergoes drug and alcohol screening?
Everybody wants to work here. Part time, full time, everybody.
How often?
Um and and also our CDL drivers in the public works department, they're required to be tested on a random basis or part of. Consortium of them, and we'll get notices on a quarterly basis saying, take this gentleman off the road and send him to get tested. It's part of the CDL requirements.
And for. The four of you, do you do it once when you're hired and you're done or do you have?
Once when we're hired and again, if there's probable cause that anybody is, you know, impaired at work.
Okay. Sorry to hear that.
Hasn't happened.
Uh I'm seeing contracted services of pretty substantial amounts under buildings and police department. And I think there was one other uh code enforcement. Code enforcement, I guess, is because you no longer have an inspector. And so you're contracting with someone.
Okay, we'll start with buildings. For buildings, this line item includes uh pest control, HVAC. Both the annual ma- annual maintenance contract and repairs, uh water testing for this building. Uh the uh maintenance on the two uh AED units attributable to uh. Uh staff, first aid cabinet, we have uh landscaping around um the building here. And porta potty rentals at the park and Opalani. Um that totals thirty. And porta potty rentals at the park and Opalani, um, that totals thirty one thousand three hundred and forty four dollars. Now, police, that's a, that's a, those are bigger ticket items for police. Um, this includes the live scan service, um, that's uh background checks for fingerprints. Uh, we, uh, we work in cooperation with uh the borrowed Phoenix stall on that. Uh, dollars for an emergent, regional emergency response team, scheduling software, towing services. Drug testing for the police department, their AED, uh, and all the, all the vehicles, all the police vehicles have AED units in them. So the uh dollars for the AED, um, the CODI system. Um, and uh the subscription fee to the CODI system, calibration equipment uh for breathalyzers. The body camera licenses is a big one, the Axon body cameras on the officers, that software and those uh subscription fees. And then uh some fees that are payable to the Chester County Public Safety Training Campus. Uh, so that's thirty five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars in total.
Your finance director has a big job. Jim had a big job. Uh, do they all work uh body cameras?
They do.
Went, went on duty non-stop?
Yeah.
Are they allowed to turn them off?
I'm sorry?
Are they allowed to turn them off?
They're activated at certain points, yeah.
Oh, yeah, do they self activate, or are they, when they do something, are they?
I don't know if they're self activated or not. I know the cameras in the car are self activated usually to the lifeline. I think they have to start it themselves.
You'd have to ask the chief.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they have certain protocols of when they're, they're mandatory, supposed to put it on.
Every time they're never active with something.
Okay. And code enforcement is because you're down one person, you're putting into contracted instead?
Yeah, so that's um, no, uh, we, we've always uh contracted code enforcement. We don't have a certified. Uh, code official, building code official on staff, we don't have an inspector. Um, so that's uh our inspection services uh through our third party, and we've had a third party for a while now, most municipalities do.
But the inspectors? Cause the inspectors, it has a salary in there for, for this year's budget.
So.
And none for this year. But is that just moving it from inspector salary to contracted services?
So you're looking at permit codes and zoning?
No, right, the very next one, four thirteen point one one four.
Yeah, yeah, because that, inspector's salary, uh, that should be um an employee salary. Uh, if you're going to uh hire a consultant, a third party, it should be under contracted services. So I think in past years, um, that was just miscoded. We, we never had an in-house inspector.
Oh, okay.
But there was no salary that.
I thought we had dropped somebody from that general position.
There was a zoning law.
Thank you.
But that was, that was contracted.
That's exactly what I was. Uh, I also wondered about the hydrant fees, but John covered that and opened my eyes to it and the pension uh expense as well, so that's all I have. Thanks for, for your patience.
Thank you. Anyone else? George?
Uh, quick, I think, uh, so open space, I think you said the, the principal balance is four point something million? Is that what he said, Tommy? Something like that?
He said four point two five million.
Four point two five, and that's on, that's of the, the original amount. Do you remember, Jim, did we borrow, was it eight million that we borrowed originally?
I thought it was ten million.
Ten?
Yeah.
And there's four point two remaining? In that, and that has a six years left in term?
Six.
Okay, um. Okay, um, other question, I, something that I heard, so you said we're intending to have two police chiefs next year? Is that what you said?
Um, we'll have one police chief, can only have one police chief at a time. But our current chief is on uh the deferred retirement option plan. Um, and he, he is required to retire at the end of the year.
The end of this year?
End of next year.
End of next year.
Twenty six, uh, when the new chief is hired and sworn into office, he will be the one and only chief here. And uh the current chief will serve.
But did you say you're gonna have them both on salary next year?
Current chief will no longer be the chief, he'll be available as a consultant to us and helping out, yes.
Oh, and so you intend for him to be, eh, oh.
Yes.
He'll no longer be the chief, but he'll still be a full-time employee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and his responsibilities will just be to consult?
Uh, to be determined, but he'll, he'll help with the transition, certainly.
It's a pretty big search process to get a qualified chief and. We don't want to leave it to the last minute, so that's what's going on now.
No, I know, but you're, you're intending to have a, you, you think you're gonna have a new chief at the beginning of the year, is that your?
It's budgeted for the beginning of the year, I don't know when the new chief will start.
Just a year overlap, it seems like a lot, I understand.
Yeah.
Overlap, but. Um, a year seems like.
The other thing you should be aware is, is the chief has accumulated vacation and, and other things, so that. Even though he, in theory, works to the end of the year, I believe.
July.
Jul- yeah, it's, he's not gonna work for many months.
Oh, you mean he's taking basically his accumulated leave for the rest of the year?
Correct.
Yeah, well, t- typically, and that kind of position, they get paid for whatever, ultimately. So, six-month overlap, probably more reasonable, I think, if that's what it really is, but, okay, um. The other thing, and I know it's not relevant for this year, but since we discussed it last time. You, you mentioned the possibility of a future fire and police tax last time we met. Um, and I guess, is that something that would, I, it was said there was gonna be a. Would, if, if ever implemented, it would be a real estate-based tax, what, why would that be real, limited to real estate?
Law limits it to mileage.
So there's a, there's a specific uh portion of the law that specifies fire and police?
Yeah, in, in the second class township code, there, there's a, there's a list of, of taxes that the township can adopt.
Okay.
Uh, the first is a tax to support the fire companies up to three mills. And there's a separate tax for EMS up to one half of a mil.
Oh, so they're capped as well?
They are, all, all, all the taxes in the second class township code are capped.
Okay. Um. I think that's it. Thank you.
Uh, you mentioned the drop uh for uh Chief Swininger.
Yep, in Philadelphia, that's an enormous amount, is it the same setup here? And how is that budgeted?
Yeah, so it's, it's similar, I mean, the, the, the tenants of the program are the same.
So does that, would that be budgeted for this year, or, or, or after he, how, just tell me, how's that budgeted? Cause that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, it, it's his salary, it's his salary.
One additional year of salary?
No, 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 so the, the way drop works is, uh, when you enter the drop program. Uh, your uh retirement benefit is determined, you're not accruing any additional benefit. Um, at that point, uh, pension contributions are made uh on a monthly basis into like an escrow account. It doesn't go to the individual. The individual stays on for a certain period of time, and for this township, that period is not to exceed three years. Um, during which time those pension payments are made into a fund, and that person continues to receive his or her salary. Uh, when the time comes for the employment to end, uh, the lump sum transfer is made. Uh, from the escrow into uh the retirement fund of, of the former employee, and of course, the former employee doesn't.
So you're already holding those funds, so it wouldn't be at, at an expense?
Correct.
It would be pulled out of.
We're not holding those, those funds, those funds are paid into PMRS.
Yeah.
So the state?
PMRS, and some of the municipal retirement system holds those funds and they will pay them to the chief when he retires.
Okay, so we don't.
On paper, it looks like the chief is retired, but the check isn't going to the chief, it's staying in the pension.
But it's not coming to our?
No.
Okay, that's.
That's a complicated. Anyone else have some questions? Please come on up. Stay, Jimmy.
Hi, how you doing? I'm Lee Johnson, one oh six Marigold Court. Um, I'm just here to talk about um. The road resurfacing program. I think you mentioned five hundred thousand budgeted? That's great. Thank you for doing that. Um, I've seen some really nice improvements in the roads in the past year, like right out here. Uh, the resurfacing, it looks great on Saint Matthews, uh, Barrington Lane, um. Uh, Saint Anthony, Pine Drive, Rachel Drive, Lily Pond Lane and Houndstooth Lane, all look really good. Um, so I just respectfully request uh R Street, Marigold Court uh be added for consideration in twenty twenty six. Um, if it's possible, if it's within uh the budget, um, I'd really appreciate that. Um, our road was chip sealed uh back in twenty nineteen, and honestly, it wasn't really the best quality job. Um, we still have pebbles in our tires, um, there's divots in the road, the quality of the jobs wasn't really all that great. So, um, I don't know, if it's possible to get, to do it next year, I think uh it'd be great. Our neighbors would appreciate it too. Um, I brought some pictures just to show you guys uh what the road looks like out there, but. I'm sure you can drive by. Thank you.
Thank you.
This bad?
No, you keep that, thank you.
Okay.
It would be nice to, you know, have a really clear map and what, you know, what our future plans are for the roads, which we. Did at one time, and I know you're working on that, right?
Miracle.
I know, it's not next year, when is it? Do you want to see that?
It's, it's.
Hi, good, hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Kleins, and yeah, Deputy Fire Chief from Lowish Corner. Uh, I know one of the uh increases this year, obviously is the fire company, I understand it, you know, it looks, it, it is a big increase. And I, I wanted to come with some numbers tonight that I didn't have last meeting, just to kind of share with the board and with the residents here. And I, I actually have statistics, statistics to go back to two thousand and ten, but I will start around about ten years ago at twenty fifteen. So just a little bit of background about the fire company, uh, Lowish Corner Fire Company does not service any of all of one municipality. We service portions of three municipalities. We serve a portion of West Vincent, excuse me, we serve a portion of Upper Euclid. And we serve a portion of East Nat Mill. Specifically, in Upper Euclid and uh West Vincent, we cover more of the high populous areas of those jurisdictions. Kimberton covers out a lot of the preserved areas where it's open land, so we cover most of the population. Historically speaking, and I'll go back to twenty fifteen, from twenty fifteen to current date, out of the three municipalities partially that we cover. Uh, West Vincent Township is a fifty percent uh user of our services, which means almost every year consistently between forty nine and fifty percent. Of our fire and EMS services are done here in West Vincent Township. Our funding, if I go back to twenty fifteen, uh, West Vincent Township in twenty fifteen contributed forty seven thousand dollars to Lowish Corner Fire Company. And at the time, they were fifty percent of our, of our call volume. In twenty sixteen, it went down from forty seven thousand to thirty seven thousand, so we actually dropped down ten thousand dollars the following year. And again, we were still at fifty percent of our call volume in West Vincent. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And twenty twenty three were all consistently at forty eight thousand dollars with no increase. In those specific years as well, we were between forty nine and fifty percent of the call volume in West Vincent Township. In twenty twenty four, we actually lost funding, we went from forty eight to thirty seven, so we actually lost funding after not having any increase at all. And graciously, this year, we were the only fire company in twenty twenty five to receive funding for forty six thousand, which is still two thousand left than what we've been giving. Under this proposed budget for our operating expenses, uh, West Vincent has graciously agreed to uh increase that operating fund to seventy five thousand. Which is proposed for next year, so at that four thirty three that uh Mr. Ryan was speaking of, specifically for our operating fund. Seventy five thousand dollars of that will be going towards Lowish Corner for our operating. So, I will say in twenty twenty five, West Fin is still on par to become fifty percent of our services. And I will say that West Vincent is still the lower contributor of our municipalities when it comes to East Nat Mill and Upper Euclid. So in twenty twenty five, we still receive more funding from Upper Euclid and East Nat Mill. So I appreciate the board's effort in trying to make this right by increasing that money. Because again, as a user of those services, our trucks are more in West Vincent, historically speaking, than our other two municipalities, so they are a big user of that service. So by increasing that, it puts us more in par with the other municipalities what we service. So we appreciate that, um, just real quick, we have a firehouse that's from nineteen seventy two, nothing's been done from our firehouse from nineteen seventy two. There's no twenty twenty five updated codes for our building. We're looking at purchasing, we're looking at redoing our building at a cost of about six million dollars. And that's just basically gonna be, nothing frivolous, just bare bones, just kind of just what we need for operating. Plus, we have a one point two million dollar purchase that will be coming in in January of twenty twenty seven for fire apparatus. So all this money is gone, obviously is going for, for, for good reason, and um, to comment earlier, we, we, we are fully transparent. We provide our profits and losses to the township and our auditing to the township. We understand that this is taxpayer money. There's nothing here that's hidden on the fire company's side. We are here to provide whatever transparency that's needed to make sure that we are good stewards of that money, and we continue to do that. So as far as this year and going into twenty twenty six, I know that it's a large increase, and I, I will speak on behalf of Kimberton and Ridge. We appreciate the increase in that funding, um, it is definitely needed, it will definitely be put, put to good use, and we would definitely be good stewards of that money. So just wanted to say thank you to the board and to the taxpayers of the township for continuing to fund the fire company. So, thank you.
Thank you.
What, what percentage are we, is our funding compared to your overall funding in general?
Um. Well, I can give you the numbers, I, I have the numbers off here, so I, and I'll just speak for twenty twenty five. So in twenty twenty five, uh, we re- for our, this is for our operating, which is all of our general expenditures. We received forty six thousand from West Vincent, uh, we leave, we received sixty six thousand from East Nat Mill. And we received a hundred thousand from Upper Euclid. So consistently, that, that goes to keep the lights on, our insurances, all of our apparatus, our fuel, our, you know, training, all that kind of stuff is what that goes. And then there's obviously additional money, which goes into our capital reserve, which is the high massive ticket items like our trucks. Which again, they're over a million dollars, will go towards our building renovations, which is looking at to be between five and six million.
And we did give some.
West Vincent has, yes.
Two, which.
That's correct, and thank you for that too, and also, that's also projected in that four hundred and thirty three thousand, cause it's broken down between several entities, but for Lowish Corner. Uh, we're getting seventy five thousand of that, which is an increase of forty six. And the other remaining, I think, two hundred thousand will be for our operating, or our capital reserve for our fire truck and for our building renovations, which. We've got some pretty high ticket items coming up in the next couple of years.
Thank you very much.
But thank you to West Vincent for stepping up, we do appreciate it, and thank you to the taxpayers as well. And we, we'll make sure that we are good stewards in uh whatever documentation that we provide, we'll make sure Mr. Ryan gets that. Thank you.
For what you do.
Do you know how much uh contributions from residents is for the West Vincent? Do you have that broken down?
We did get that last time, didn't we?
Well, I don't think you had it last time.
I have, I, I can get that for you, we are, we have a, a, a third-party contractor that does our fund drive for us. Uh, so what they do is they, they mail, they send the fund letters out to all of our residents, including Upper Euclid, West Vincent and East Nat Mill. We can get that information and break it down by township, and how much they do then. Yeah, I, I think overall, between the three of them, we get about an eighteen percent return, but I can break that down even further by township, I can get that information. Yep, absolutely, that's no problem, I, that, that's easy to do. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, anything at all regarding the agenda? Being none, let's move on, um. We do uh need a motion to approve the October fifteenth joint meeting minutes. Um, and that was, that was for the sustainability committees, um, what do you call it, the summit.
All right, second.
Uh, favor?
Hi.
Fine. And also for October twentieth meeting minutes.
And so moved again.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And now we move on to different type of public comment, which would be anything that is not on the agenda. Want to have anything they'd like to bring up?
So in May, we did a uh stop sign warrant study. For Schoolhouse Lane and Blowing Springs Road, and I'm just wondering, I haven't heard anything since then, did we have any?
Pendot declined it.
Pendot declined it?
They, they would not do the study.
Okay, um, and I guess at the time, I also asked if you would. Consider also making the stop sign at the schoolhouse and hollow a full stop instead of a. Stop right, left turn only. Is that something?
No, at Schoolhouse and Hollow?
Yes, it would be the end of, the downhill end of Schoolhouse.
Yeah, so you're saying stop on each.
It's, right now, it's, uh.
Stops at Schoolhouse.
It's top if you're turning left onto Schoolhouse, but if you're bearing right, but it's still Hollow Road, it's no stop.
That's a state road.
Right?
Yeah.
That's a state road, so again, we can't do that.
Now, it'll be moot if you're actually gonna make Schoolhouse a one-way road, is.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But.
And that, which direction, would the downhill direction be the traffic flow?
It would be, uh, the direction would be from Hollow to Flowing Springs.
So uphill would be the one-way?
Uphill would be, yes.
Okay, so this will still be a problem. The reason I bring this up is people don't, obviously don't stop there, but they also.
Are going pretty fast when they come zipping around the corner and. You know, we've had. Tire screeching occasionally, no accidents that I I've witnessed, but. It is somewhat dangerous. And that's something I have to bring up the Pendot, is that? Is that? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Okay, second question. I ask every time, um, what's the status of the parking plan? For the butterscotch pastry? The parking?
Oh, parking plan?
Yeah, I think you said they had submitted something to the township.
No. It. We we discussed this at the zoning hearing.
Yeah, you said they had submitted something to the.
They submitted um a parking exhibit to the zoning hearing board application, which is part of the application. Uh, they submitted a plan for a path along Flowing Springs at their property's frontage. Um, they haven't prepared and submitted, I shouldn't say prepared, maybe they did it on their own. They haven't submitted the parking plan that will go before the board of supervisors for approval.
But they have submitted a uh pedestrian walkway?
Yes.
Plan?
Yeah, a few months ago.
A few months ago?
Yeah, maybe two months ago.
Okay, and that's predicated on a.
Zoning, it's a zoning permit.
Okay, and that's predicated on a Pendot crosswalk? You said?
It's Pendot's review.
Pendot review of a crosswalk?
They've got no comments on it.
And is that considered a mid block crosswalk?
It would be.
Okay, and how long is that? How long is that review process?
Well, we're done with our review. Zoning review, at least. If Pendot has any comments, they'll let us know. We haven't heard from Pendot.
So when when do you expect a parking plan?
From the property owner?
Yes.
I don't know.
Well, isn't that kind of the essence of our discussion?
We've discussed this a number of times. This is the last step in the process. You and your attorney disagree, and that's fine. But this is the last step in the process. We still have sewage issues to address, and that's gonna take a little time.
So you want you, you're, what you're saying is sewage will be addressed before the parking plan? Is that your intent?
Yes.
It is, okay. So we're at seven months now from the conditional use. And you can't, still can't give me a a scoped date on when a parking plan would be considered.
That's correct.
Okay. And.
Given the finding on that, do we really expect it to change that much other than something?
Well, the last time I was here, I was told.
Sewage, right?
Last time, the story was wait till after the zoning hearing. Now the zoning hearing's done, now it's all the wait, wait for sewer and. It it seems like there's always a reason. To wait. Last summer, it was wait because it takes a long time to design a parking plan. Then they said they weren't gonna do that. And it it, I just. It seems. Like, honestly, like we're being stalled.
Can I just say, are you concerned that? You think they're gonna come up with something outrageous or, because I I don't think it's gonna change. I think it's just gonna be a matter of.
Well.
Being sure that it's engineered better.
They have two off-street parking.
Yeah. I don't think there's really anything to be waiting.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna be surprised when they submit, what they submit for approval.
Well, my concern is what's there now is not sufficient for the business that they're doing. Otherwise, I I wouldn't care. And I feel like we're just. Going on month after month of the same condition.
But I mean, didn't they just get denied at the zoning?
That was for outdoor seating. Had nothing to do with parking. That's been my. What I've been here every week.
Uh, you know, outdoor seating, which.
But.
It's gonna significantly.
Very ageable heels, so that's not even finally.
That's true. But then you, if you're not gonna. Okay. Um, I know it won't make any difference, but this was yesterday morning. This was the situation. In the parking lot. I know you all drive by and don't see anything. But this is what I see on Sunday morning and Saturday. Frank with you. And. It's.
Not easy much. Well, we're sorry.
It's clearly.
Bad place, huh?
Not. What I expected. Seven months after the conditional use order. And it, you know, I I just. It seems like every, we.
How are the cars getting in here if this is where?
I don't know how they get there, but there's parking bumpers in the grass. They've been there. Since conditional use. It is, but somebody moves a rope and they drive around it, and it's, it just, this is.
That's interesting.
This happens all day. We have a thousand pictures like this. And. The impression I get is that. It doesn't happen because you haven't seen it. I mean. I thought the whole point of going through this process, we'd come to a resolution where. There was parking that was compatible with our ordinances. And the business fit to the scale of what our ordinance is designed to fit, and I feel like. Nothing's happened. I mean. No schedule on when it might be resolved. It's sort of. Would you be frustrated? Guess not. Thank you.